The City Council of October 7th will come back into session. And that will move us down to, excuse me, five ordinance and resolutions for first reading by title. Future public hearings required. The next public hearing would be two weeks from today, the 21st, I believe.
Yes, there's actually two public hearings required for this ordinance. So we'd have one on the 21st and the second one on November 4th.
All right. I'll read the verbiage, which is, "An ordinance of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, amending the land development regulations, part two of the code of the City of Vero Beach relating to medical marijuana dispensaries providing for conflict and severability, providing for effective date requested by City Council." Staff comment, please.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. The draft ordinance before you has been prepared by the staff in response to direction from you, from the City Council. The proposed regulations address location, development standards, operations of facilities, dispensing of medical marijuana. The ordinance is a response to the possibility that medical marijuana use may become legal in the state of Florida with the voter approval of amendment two, creating Article 10, Section 29 of the Florida Constitution. I just want to point out for the, I'm sure you all are aware, that there is a low THC marijuana called Charlotte's Web that is, that rulemaking is being done on it, on that. So there is some legal marijuana in the state at this point in time. In preparing the ordinance, as the staff intends to make it very restrictive to address potential adverse impacts of these facilities, but also to provide a safe and secure environment for distribution of medical marijuana for lawful purposes. So I just want to go with briefly the salient points in there. First, it allows only dispensing of marijuana, not its cultivation and processing. We feel this minimizes the potential for diversion of marijuana and other kind of activities that are unlawful. Allowed only in an industrial district and only as a conditional use. Requires physical separation from schools, childcare centers, public parks, residential districts, and other medical marijuana dispensaries. I will now bring up, to show you approximate locations. Based on those separation requirements, the area in Ping basically shows you where these medical marijuana dispensary could be located. It's mostly, for those maybe watching on TV or whatever, it's really in the southern part of the city, following right with the railroad tracks as the center point. The ordinance, draft ordinance places a limit on the size of these facilities, limits business daylight hours, and only allows sale of marijuana-related supplies or educational materials, and requires that all business be conducted indoors. It prohibits the onsite consumption of marijuana and/or alcohol, and limits access to dispensaries to qualifying patients 18 years or over, personal caregivers, employees of the business, or other qualified individuals, including city and state officials. And the ordinance itself is only going to be effective if you adopt it and it's passed by the voters. There are two changes that came out at the planning and zoning board meeting. We've handed those out to you. You should have a copy. It's highlighted in yellow. One was they were concerned about deliveries, and that was, I think, taken care of during business hours. And the other was, we were thinking about dumpsters and that, and we put it, we added that out there, so we don't get into that issue. That concludes my brief presentation. Unless you have some questions to me, I'd like to just turn it over to the chief. He'd have a few words, so, or whatever, however you'd like to put it.
I'll save my question, because I know that Chief Curry needs to get up and get out.
Okay.
We've taken enough of his time this morning.
That's a good way to put it, Councilmember Graves, get up and get out. Excuse me for my changeover.
They don't give me the same offer today.
Yes, sir. Here to serve. But I have, we're on our way to Palm Harbor for our reaccreditation process. We'll be, get that stamp of approval tomorrow morning, hopefully so. That's why I'm dressed the way I am right now. Is there any questions? I guess, you know, I shared some comments with the planning and zoning board last week, and I just kind of opened it up as a comment, and to make sure it was clear that, you know, being a member of the Florida Police Chiefs Association and an active member, there, I can tell you that the way the amendment's worded, the association is opposed to the amendment, as well as the Florida Sheriff's Association and Attorney General Pam Bondi. We have a few concerns, mainly, as you can imagine, you know, we all remember the pill mill over here on 21st Street, US 1, and we certainly don't want to go back to those days where there's unscrupulous activities through prescriptions, through dispensing, and bringing that criminal element that we all strive to keep out of the city. So we have concerns in that regard, obviously. And I think with the restrictions that we have, if we do have to have an ordinance, I think that's probably as restrictive as we can almost get, if you will. And we would certainly keep an eye on the property and monitor if it was here in the future. And I also explained that, and we were just talking a little bit on the side, you know, my mother had breast cancer, and my sister is recovering right now from cancer, and my mother-in-law also had cancer. They both had cancer last year. So I certainly know how that goes with cancer patients and the need to recover and to get the best treatment they can receive. And one of my best friends died from ALS just last year, so I know all about that. I just, I think it can be done in a different way, of course, through pharmacy and prescription, prescribed medication like we do today for anything else, but that's kind of my side note as well. But we just want to protect the citizens here, and we don't want it to be the first step, if you will, to legalizing marijuana.
Tim, I have one, only one question of you. And the sale is allowed on Tuesday, and it's relatively, I mean, on Tuesday, yeah, on Sunday. And it's relatively close to that church. I mean, do we have to allow it to be sold on Sunday?
No, you don't have to allow it. I mean, you're setting the operating times if you feel, I guess it's Calvary, that's that church, yeah. I mean, you certainly could eliminate that. I think they have some children, you know, youth activities there, too. So if you want to eliminate, there's no, there's nothing that prevents you from having no sales. Some of the ordinance we looked at have no sales on Sunday.
Do we have any more questions for Chief Curry?
No.
Okay. See ya.
No more questions?
Are we okay with not doing it on Sunday as a general consensus?
Yeah, I would agree.
The other thing for the public, there have been five centers authorized, not yet built, for medical marijuana in the state, which will be there at some point in time. I have not heard the timing.
And we addressed that. It's five organizations, really, so we don't know how that'll be done. They're going through rulemaking, and we heard there's a lot of, let's say, some challenges being made on the rulemaking, because it's tied to ongoing nursery activities. They've been in business 30 years, so some of that. Now, I just want to point out, this ordinance would affect that, but we felt that this is a conservative approach. We can always come back to modify it for these low THC, but we can't guess. I mean, we all understand, I think we all do, that even if this passes, I'm sure the legislature will want to have its two cents in there, and then you're going to go to rulemaking. So things could change as we go along here.
I have a, I have a couple of questions. On seven and eight, D 7 and 8, where not allowed a person under the age of 18 in the medical marijuana dispensary anytime. Now, if there are a patient, they, what I, my understanding is, like in Colorado, they weigh you to make sure that you know the amount you're supposed to be getting. If that person isn't accompanied by their caregiver or their responsible adult, how would they then determine the amount appropriate for their condition if they're not allowed inside?
Well, my understanding is a doctor is going to be prescribing, writing whatever it is for this, so the doctor's going to decide what that is up front. I mean, the question you brought up is a good one. We got, we didn't want children, I mean, there were some stories that are brought up in California where they've had medical marijuana, where kids come out of school and they wander in there.
And I agree, but if they're the patient...
But they're not weighing, it's a little different than that. That's my understanding of this. I mean, certainly, if you wanted to say people under 18 could be in there with a caregiver, I guess you could do that. We were just trying to prevent problems by just saying that those under 18, or can't be in there. And if you, if a child needs, someone that young needs it, they're going to have a caregiver, like a parent or somebody come in to do it.
Okay, okay.
Public comment? Mr. Day? There's only one Mr. Day.
Thank God for that. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Ken Dag, 1846 21st Avenue. First question on my list is, can you put it somewhere else? That's number one question. Number two question, I have a question. Do you have hours of operation? I heard today that you're not going to allow it to be open Sunday. In the ordinance, and if I, I'll ask, I see heads shaking that there is hours of operation, and I haven't found that in there, but I'm sure if you say it's there, it's there. The purpose of this ordinance is to protect the public health and safety. And that's in 62.651. It goes under the purpose. Number three, it says, under that section, promote and protect the character of the city residential neighborhoods and the commercial districts. I would ask that you would please take a look at page number four, under B 2. It says not to be located within 1,000 feet of any school. I understand they were hoping for more, but 1,000 foot, it is what it is. But if you look at where it talks about the residential area, they have 200 foot. I would ask that you would please increase that from 200 foot to 800 foot. It is too close. I think you're going to have problems later on down the road. This type of drug will come in pill form, and I think in a liquid form, where this is too close to, like, some of our less affluent neighborhoods where kids can come up and buy the stuff, you know, if they see people trying to sell, very easy to sell. So I want you to think about that for a moment. So please increase, increase it. We had a situation here not too long ago where you had a facility that opened up to sell drugs and everything else to help people with their pain, but that really got out of hand. You all know that story. So not happy where you're proving this to go. Maybe you guys can think about a better spot to get it away from the business district, to get away from the residential neighborhoods, the apartment buildings, because you've got to remember, you've got a lot of kids, you've got older people. This type of stuff can get out of hand. It can bring in, as the chief was just before me, the element that's not so nice here, you know, the criminal aspect of it. So think out, you know, in the future, back to a different location. I understand that you want to do something as far as with an ordinance to protect the city, but please think about your neighborhoods. This is over on the mainland. Again, I'm not really happy where you're putting it. We are working very hard to square away our downtown area, some of our mainland neighborhoods, and this is, I'll tell you right now, this is going to put a burden on us. And this is something some of us are going to have to think about in the future. I'm still not that old yet. I've got a few years left in me. I have grandkids. I have other, younger people that we know that have young children. So please just use caution, because this is going to affect a lot of us in the event that this thing passes at the ballot box. So location, you answered my question on the hours of operation. If we can increase it from 200 foot to the 800 foot, that would be appreciated. That would be a step in the right direction. And I may have some more things to say about this at the next hearing, and I'll funnel some of my concerns to your planning and zoning director. I've already went online today when I went home real quick to find out what other states have similar legislation to what you're working on. Might be a little bit more teeth that you can put into your ordinance. I know other states are different than the state of Florida, but it may be helpful for what we're trying to do here. And thank you, Ms. Turner, for bringing this up. They put it on the board. Thank you.
Wayne, did we, he makes a good point. Some other states have already gone through this. Did we query any sister communities to form this around them?
Absolutely.
Is there any, anywhere in there that you have a differentiation between medical marijuana and other marijuana? There is a difference.
Well, this only addresses whatever would be made legal. I mean, there's already laws against just general possession of marijuana.
And we did, we looked at numerous ordinances. I looked at Boulder, Colorado. I looked at some in California. So we looked at some states that have some heavy-duty use of marijuana.
Already in the fight.
They're already in the fight. In fact, I think part of what we looked, I looked at is, there's a 78-page report by the sheriff, California sheriffs, they really get into detail on some of the impacts they've seen out there. So I think what the state's doing, but our biggest problem, I think, and you can see the opposition to this, no matter what you think, is it's so broad, and that's what everybody's scared.
Shotgun.
Yeah, it's very broad. And it, you know, and I got to believe the legislature is not going to let that be so broad, but still gets people nervous, and...
So, Tim, have you, have you found anywhere where there's a definition of who is going to control these dispensaries? I mean, how do you tell someone that they're, who says, yes, yea, verily, this is medical marijuana, and who goes in to inspect whether or not they are in fact selling medical marijuana as to other issues?
Well, it's going to be the Department of Health will have primary responsibility. Certainly, we do have some responsibility under zoning, but I got to believe that permitting, the licensing, all's going to be done through the state. So the question is, does the state have the resources to do all this?
The state will have the burden of enforcement.
They'll have the burden, but we, but we do have some local controls here. If they're not meeting the standards in here, we, then we can do, you know, we do have a chance to at least try to take care of those issues, but when you get down to that, I mean, we could have gotten into details of, we want to see your, you know, retail records of the year, how much you distribute. I mean, that's going way overboard beyond what a planning and zoning-type law would do.
No, and yet we've seen some of that, and I think the City of Naples, their ordinance said, yeah, you have to tell us where these people, where these people live, their, what state of residency that are coming in for it. I mean, yeah, and I agree with that, because administrative nightmare.
Well, and from my understanding, in some of the other cities that have done this, the control processes that the state legislature and the Department of Health puts in place are way more detailed than we could ever begin to enforce, from weighing it every step of the way, records in, records out, background checks on all of the employees. It's pretty tedious.
Yeah, certainly.
If they, if, yeah, if they enact that. Ms. Graves, at this point, we don't know.
We don't know. And I would say one thing, unlike the pill mills, which we had, the state finally stepped in, and we did some things at a local level, we've got some strict zoning here. You aren't going to have these things all over the place in the city as you, you know, we didn't get into those kind of planning, land use, zoning matters on pill mills. So there is some difference.
Have you found anywhere where real, authentic pharmacies are dispensing this as opposed to some?
They, they can't.
They can't.
They can't, because there's no, there's been no research done to make a pharmaceutical grade that any company will stand behind, because it's been, you can't.
That's why I'm against this whole thing.
Well, Mr. Fletcher, the International City Managers Association has done a lot of research on this. You've got to always remember, marijuana, no matter what this referendum does, is still an illegal drug by federal law. You go to the state of Washington as an example, the state attorney on the eastern side of the state of Washington is enforcing the federal law. The western side, they are not. So it's two different, distinct units, and you get caught with marijuana in Spokane as an example, you're more often to get prosecuted. One of the issues that the cities are facing from a city manager's perspective are folks gathering around in the parking lot, sitting on the curbs, and because a lot of these dispensaries will have a doctor who's right there just writing a prescription almost as you go through the door. There's nothing to really prevent that, as long as the guy's a doctor, a practicing physician. And in Colorado, that's what they've been facing, and they've also been facing these dispensaries located in some of the main streets of your smaller cities. And what that happens is, then you, the crowd that gathers around infiltrates what you're trying, for example, 14th Avenue in our case. So the zoning is very, very critical, the hours of operation, and where they can use the product is another element.
Can, can we, can we prohibit prescriptions being written on the premises? I mean, you'd have to visit another doctor in town to do it?
I don't, I don't think you can.
That's probably going to be the state's going to get to that.
You know, our thrust on this is to, there are other ways to attack it, but our thrust on this is through zoning, which we believe we have authority to do, so I think you've got to stick to zoning. On a humorous note, two nights ago, I believe it was, on Fox News, Waters World did an intercept of people outside these dispensaries in Boulder, Colorado, and there were very few of them that knew they were in Boulder, Colorado.
But they knew what they were buying.
Anyway.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick question. How did the borders of this get decided?
The borders? Well, it, based on the numbers I use for separation requirements and the zoning.
Okay, so this is probably one of the few areas that meets all of those requirements. I'm just, I'm just noticing that you got a high school in a flick right there.
Yeah, and that's over 1,000 feet.
Four or five blocks away.
The problem you get into, if you make the distance regards too much, you might as well ban the thing and go to it, and we, and I think our all, our feeling is banning it puts us in a, not in a good position.
Unreasonable, untenable position.
And plus, you know, there may be, you know, I'm not trying to condone marijuana, though I'm a kid of the 60s, but, but there may be lawful medical use of it. And that's, you know, if it does pass, you know, there's, there's some reasons for it. But that is one thing that we got into. I know, I've talked to some people who wanted more, but we wouldn't, you know, we looked at the, we thought the industrial areas, because of the commercial, the problems they have in commercial areas, and the loitering and all that, and all the other industrial areas, either the manufacturing is too close to a park or something, or it's on federal la, or airport. We know that ain't going to happen.
FAA is not going to put that.
And it's our, Big Blue and the waste, and the water, the water treatment plant, but, I mean, the waste treatment plant. And they don't, that's our property. So they're, it really kind of limits, and there's the manufactured housing project that is industrial, but it has an overall, it's got a Futuranius designation of mobile home parks, so you couldn't do it there. So that exempted. So it really limited the area. I mean, we could play with these numbers. I think the press asked me, I don't know if you could get more than one or two, or more than one of these in there, or two, with the separation requirements.
How about 500 feet on the residential and so forth?
Yeah, I, I can run that out and come back with another map, so you can see the difference. And it would affect a little down the south, maybe. It is, I can do that. I mean, I, you know, 200, 500, I'd...
Well, can we move forward in this?
Yeah, I just, just have one question.
Go ahead.
Mr. Gary, I know when we were, were successfully able to keep the pill mill out from a miracle mile, that, and working with Ms. Lyons, she said that one of the things that really helped us was in the code, the ability of the P and Z board to pose additional requirements.
And they can do that here.
With this being a conditional use, that is the case?
It can be done. That's exactly right.
Thank you.
And the other thing, oh, I forgot to mention, when you brought Ms. Lyons' name up, the other thing, the planning and zoning, wanted us to work with the county and other municipalities, which we are already doing. I just want, so you understand that.
I think the P and Z board did a fantastic job. I watched, there was lots and lots of...
Oh, that was a fun meeting.
Yeah.
I'd like to move this forward for a hearing on October 21st.
Second.
Do we need to amend it to include the changes we just did, or just?
I think he's got it.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got those two, and I'll revise it to reflect your request.
This is Vaak.
Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
Okay, an ordinance, we're on 5B now. An ordinance of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, abandoning all of the 15-foot alley shown on the platte of the Ocean Corp subdivision, lying between track D and E, lying between the east right-of-way of State Highway A1A and the west right-of-way, right-of-way of the abandoned Coral Avenue, is recorded in Plan Book 4 on page 81 of the public records of Indian River County, Florida, retaining a utility easement providing for conflict and severability, providing for an effective date requested by the Public Works Director. Staff comment, please?
Yes, this is a 15-foot easement that goes, or right-of-way that goes nowhere, and by retaining it as a utility easement, it does free it up to the adjoining property owners to use the property for any expansion. And there, there is some new reinvestment going on in that property, so we would recommend that we abandon the right-of-way, retain the utility easement.
I don't know whether they have a map of this, but for the public, it's the 711 on A1A is one bounding property, and where, what was it, O'Charley's?
O'Charley's.
Yeah. Was, and where there's another planned mixed-use development is where this is, between the two of those, stretching east and west. Comment by, a public comment? Seeing no public comment, I'll close public comment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mrs. Vaak?
And set the public hearing for October 21st. Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
Okay, city clerks matters, code enforcement lien reduction.
I will turn that over to Mr. McGary.
We had a request from KTLC 2661 LLC to reduce, to pay off a lien at 1454, 1546 26th Avenue in Vero Beach. They were offering to pay $3,000 of the $16,081.39 lien to pay it off. We did a calculation on it. Basically, this was a swimming pool, so that is one of our more hazardous-type code enforcement As we've done in the past, we generally require them to pay all our out-of-pocket expenses, including the initial civil penalty. And at least the penalty date, when they bought the property in March, we calculated how much, how many days they owned that, of those $50 continuing penalty, and would require, would recommend that they pay that. But we also decided that, and this is because we want to be sure people get the message to follow the code, we also recommend that they pay 15% of the, of the continuing fines that were occurring before they did. We were trying to get this number down. I believe the 20, it was over 23% or whatever the value of the property. We need to get them back into, to being, but they did, they should have done due diligence, knew what they had, and we think this is fair. It comes out to about 6% or so, the value of the property. So that's, unless you have some questions to me.
Mr. Fletcher, Mrs. Turner, anyone have a comment?
No, it's reasonable.
Mr. Kramer?
Well, it sure doesn't give us much to argue on when the complaint or the defendant doesn't come up, so I, I'd move staff recommendation.
Second.
Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll call a motion, Mrs., I think this is a voice, a vote, or, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, there being none, it's a pass, it's five, nothing.
Thank you, Council.
Okay, city managers means, and we'll probably have a number more here, Jim, but on the update and all board, Florida, I have some more material to add to whatever you have.
Okay, Alabot Florida, as you know, your Railroad Commission will be meeting next Monday. The chairman has asked that all the members bring forth ideas and suggestions for input into the EIS and how to have constructive input through the MPO and to be able to respond to the EIS. Something I gave to the council, one is the Table S 2, which is the comparison of the environmental effects and alternatives. This came right out of the EIS and sort of gives you a brief summary of what it actually is, and an overview, you can go to the various sections and see what they've done. I think the bottom line to the EIS is they're going to be adding so much value to us and cleaning the air so well that we shouldn't be debating this, but for those of the folks that are going to be hearing the trains, at 32 trains a day, I think there's a little more to debate, and especially if you talk about the Vero man and as a, as a historic site. But all that being said, the other thing that I sent out was a, the sealed corridors, that seems to be a debate among people. Folks are saying, well, what color the fence is going to be? I took this off the Federal Railroad Administration's website. There are no fences. What they're doing is they're talking about safety features at the intersections, at the crossovers. This could be more lights, this could be the horns, it could be anything. There is no such thing as the fence is going to run down through the center of Vero Beach because they're sealing off the railroad right-of-way. There's nothing in here to allude to that. North Carolina has added some, the state of North Carolina has added some regulations, but it came from a state level as to how they define that. But I thought it was important to try to get that information out to everyone, so you can see what it, how it's defined under the Federal Railroad Administration. Another thing that has come up is that in the walkthrough, and Monty participated in that, they came up and were recommending two closings. One is the flyover, and the other is a 20th Street, 21st Street. And we have not endorsed either one of those closings. We would not endorse the closing until we brought it back to the City Council for your consideration. There is no closing going to take place, based on the information we have been given by Alabot Florida, and the railroad folks, and the Department of Transportation. That request has to come in from the city, and as long as we keep paying for the maintenance of those crossovers, they will be left there. That 21st Street, I think, would be a major mistake, but we also have been sort of watching But we also have been sort of watching the traffic coming across, going on to, from, to 14th. And there's an awful lot of cars that take that flyover. And so I think there would be a major inconvenience, and you'd be forcing that traffic up 21st more than likely. So I'm not sure that at this point we would endorse it. You know, if it came down to a price of $200,000 or something, then we might debate the issue a little bit more. But again, we just want to make sure that the public understands, we, the city administration, have not endorsed any type of closing. We heard their comments, and they have put out a little white paper, I think it was, and implied that we had, yeah, implied that we had endorsed something. But Monty has seen that information.
Yeah, page eight, eight of eight, they're going a little fast and loose with considering.
And I think he's in the process of responding.
Monty Falls, Director of Public Works, and that's the report from Mr. Frey from the Federal Railroad Administration who participated in the walkthrough. And it was his summarization of the findings, and he loosely used considering and those types of words. I've drafted a letter in response to this and told him that the city was not interested in those closures. If the council doesn't object, I'll go ahead and send that in with that language in there.
I think you should send it, yeah.
And also, we are meeting to get to, with the county's consultant and the county and the city Sebastian on Friday to discuss each of us's input into the draft EIS. So we'll have some of that that we can talk about at the railroad meeting, High Speed Railroad Commission meeting on Monday as well.
I've got a few things to add. I was at the Treasure Coast Council of Government, whenever that was, last Wednesday. And it was unanimously adopted, it has no binding effect on us or anyone else, that the county school board and city's president felt that a maximum effort should make, be made, to object on the EIS level as necessary and also to object on the funding level. I've read a good deal of the EIS and certainly all the summary. And the fact of the matter is, it's something, in my opinion, I'll loosely use the word whitewash. And, you know, what you're really dealing with, it would become incumbent upon each government, and of course, any one government doesn't have enough power in itself. And we would want to be coupled with the MBO. But it becomes, whether it's red cockade or woodpecker, woodpeckers, or whether it would be the scrub jays, or the opening of the bridges, or the vibration, you know, what you're really talking about is, all of those points that are in the EIS would have to be refuted. This additional comment, I mean, the EIS is gonna be held here, out of the college, I believe, on November 5th. And the High Speed Railroad Commission is sunset, I believe, on December 5th, thereabouts. What we had at the Treasure Coast Council of Governments, and it's happened here also, is we had a presentation by the Not All Board group, which I thought was actually, you know, I probably don't, I probably can't subscribe to 100% of it, but I think it's useful. I personally, the next city council meeting we have, would like to see the rail commission come back and possibly the Not All Board people and possibly the MBO people come back. Because I think we're getting at the point that we're gonna have to make some decision. I personally don't feel this is, you know, I think Sebastian, no, which community was it, I can't be sure, should I couldn't, can't say, but one of them has gone forward requesting, you know, funds.
That was Sebastian.
Sebastian.
I don't think that's the proper approach. I think there'll be funds later on if we get to that. But I really think that our public expects us to do whatever we can to slow it down or stop it. Now, with all that said and done, what I'm suggesting to my four peers here is, I think we should have a little more discussion of this on the 21st and possibly to come to either some consensus or view of how, what we should do and what our position should be. You know, dealing with the federal transportation authorities, at best, gonna be difficult. We thought some of the other things were involved in it is difficult, but that may be the most difficult of all. So that's just my, I would propose that we spend some time on it at the next meeting, but that's my proposal. Anyway, I'll say no more.
Mr. Mayor, do you, and this is up for council too, seeing as how this is a very encompassing issue with a lot of passion on all the sides, would it be better if we dedicated a special call? I'm afraid our regular city council might get really clogged. And we want to give people the opportunity to be heard. I just don't know that, I'm afraid that we would not make it out of public comment before we had to adjourn for the evening, is all.
That's true. It's a six, yeah.
It's, you know, people are really, feel very strongly about this, so.
You know, I don't like special call meetings, but I would agree with you.
Something that you might want to consider is maybe the joint meeting with the High Speed Rail on Monday night. And you would have both of the High Speed Rail Commissioners there, as well as City Council, assuming that you all were free to do that. And I think that could be pretty open and frank discussion. I'm not sure who the chairman has put on the agenda for speaking, I mean, outside of me. I'm sort of a snip.
I think that's a great suggestion. They were, you know, conserving resources. We already have all those people that are specifically interested in, yeah, in this rail thing. And if the chairman would welcome that, I would love.
Would you all be prepared to, you know, make some decisions? I don't know what the decisions are.
They're for discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council. Ken Dag, 1846 21st Avenue. I am your High Speed Rail Chairman. I think that's a great idea to have a joint meeting, because you can hear the suggestions from your commission. And if you are so inclined, you can take some of those suggestions and act on them. I will tell you what the community is asking of you to do as the elected officials. Here's what keeps coming up at a lot of the meetings that I've been invited to. What are you gonna do about it? And they want to hear from the elected officials. They know we've been doing our job, and they appreciate that, but they want to hear from you guys. So I think this is great. And as you know, the time window is ticking. And I think the mayor talked about it. It's a 75 days. It started September 19th. It ends December 3rd. So that's when it's over. So we need to have our ducks in proper order so we can make our comments as a city for this EIS study. That's what your constituents are looking for. They want to hear, what are you gonna say about it? What action do you want to take place?
I think what they really want is to know what we are going to, oh, put the conditional word in, what we're gonna try to do about it.
Yes.
I think they expect us to try to do something about it, whatever that is.
Is that meeting the 13th? Is that my understanding?
Yes, at 4:00.
Okay. Mr. Falls, would that give you time to give us an update prior to that about, you know, where the county is with their consultants and everything, so we know going in, kind of as a region, what we're doing?
That meeting's Friday, so I can, you know, summarize the notes on Monday and talk about it at the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Would it be appropriate to have the county person here?
Yes.
Invite them.
Phil Mattson, if that's okay with you all?
That would really be good, the MPO director. I think it would be good if we could invite him.
And I'll get with Ms. Vok to send out a little note to the commissioners to be prepared since it will be a joint meeting, so they can come in and get right down the business. And on the closure, I'll tell you what I've been hearing on any rail crossings being closed. The business community, the neighborhoods, the answer is, no, we don't want it. And I've been hearing that over and over again, because people thought you were thinking about doing some closures. You know how it gets out there. And I've assured them, our city council has made no decisions on closing any of the rail crossings at this time. Thank you.
Just as, Mr. Dag, I mean, if, I don't know if you guys are, how much you're communicating outside of this, of the county with the other groups, but it just seems to me that since we're dealing with the Federal Railroad Administration, I'd like to know if there's some other, I don't want to say join another organization, but, you know, there's gotta be, you know, a coming together of a lot of these communities in order to make a difference on the federal level. And if you know of some way that we could, you know, make a difference by joining another community or group of communities to get that message up there, I'd really like to know.
All right, I'll have that in my little pile of things to make suggestions on. In fact, that was something that I have in my little box at home. And I'll bring the small box to the meeting. Thank you.
Mrs. Vok, we could really use the resolution from, I believe it's Commissioner Maury of St. Louis.
Yes, I had talked to them yesterday, and they're still in the process of, are you talking about the one for Treasure Coast Council local governments? They're still in the process of revising that one. Are you talking about the one that?
Yes.
Okay, I have not received it yet. As soon as I do, I'll make sure council gets a copy of it.
Does that finish the railroad conversation?
Yes, sir, unless there's any other questions.
I have another one that, I have several questions for you, Jim, but another one that I flagged that I was gonna put on, it's actually for you and Ms. Graves. But, you know, we got this thing on, I believe it was September 24th, September 22nd, I'll stand corrected, on, you know, the plans for the beach sand into the future. And, you know, when you read through, I was on the committee for a while, when you read through the report, I mean, most of the benefit of any sand that was put out there would actually, the economic benefit is, the beaches in R5, which is the beaches in front of Sexton and up to the tracking zone and so on. In other words, almost all the return on investment is within the city. Our history has been, we have gotten no sand for a long, long time, even though we contribute 57% of the bed tax. In addition, and they're going to put together, before we meet again, they're gonna put together their recommendation of where sand goes. So I'm concerned about that, because they rate portions of the beach around Sexton as, forgotten the word.
Critically eroded.
Critically eroded, thank you. And then, then beyond that, they're also talking about structures in the water, which could be useful. The one we have off the Ocean Grill, I think, has been useful. But if you, you know, if you go to the Breakers, or you go to Naples and so on, some of the structures that can be built in the water are awful looking.
Looks like Normandy.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like Normandy. So all, for the two of you, I guess my question is, and for Monty, are we raising our voice?
Okay, there's a, there's a couple, there's a couple things here. As this plan was being put together, there were different public meetings about the plan. It was mainly just the commission and then maybe a few citizens, as you all know how some public meetings tend to go. These issues were raised. In fact, my comments are, from me specifically, are in here, that we're known worldwide for our pristine beaches, and we don't want T-grinds and all these other things going in. Most of the other commissioners felt the same way, so I don't really see that going. And in fact, if you look at the Sector 5 plans, whether they look at beach fill, enhanced beach fill, or structures, their recommended plan is beach fill. So I don't foresee structures going on our beach. And the question was also that I posed to them is, once these structures go in, have you still had to mitigate with beach fill? And in some locations, they have. So they spent all the money on the structures, and they're still putting sand on the beach. There's been a lot of work done in Sector 3 post-sandy. The other sectors are covered by the Sebastian Inlet District. Other sectors aren't up really for renourishment, because there's no public beach access, so there's no public benefit to those beaches. But beach, Sector 5, our sector, has been up in the list routinely identified as the most critically eroded along that line. So I do believe we are in line for some renourishment. It'll probably be a dune project. There's also been a request from the Army Corps of Engineers to look at our beach to discuss dune renourishment project. So I think the stars may be aligning for us. And if we, the county has been working with us, and the advisory committee's been looking at it, I think we could look at maybe a possibility of having a breakthrough on our beaches.
Well, do we need something such as a resolution, or?
I think it might be a little early for that. I don't want to force anyone's hand. It's, I mean, if you in here, they, they look at the fact that 65% of the economic value of Oceanside Hotels is within Sector 5. I mean, they're acknowledging everything that we know to be true. So I, I think let's continue to work with them. And I think that if you would like to maybe send something in support of this comprehensive plan, and that you, you like what it says, and it, all the things it acknowledges about our particular sector, that would be fine. But I think we're on track. I believe we're on track.
On October 20th, they're gonna approve this thing before our next city council meeting. And I sat there for two years, and I wasn't, and before me, somebody else sat there. And all of those years, and, you know, that was after 2004, that's after the dune damage a couple, three years ago. And the sand went in front of Indian River shores. I mean.
Mr. Mayor, I think we want them to adopt this, because it recognizes where the issues are. Mr. Falls is writing a letter, and I believe they're gonna have a meeting with Amelia on Friday and to go over that, some of the recommendations on, just for clarification primarily. But this, this comprehensive plan is what we really want, because it brings out those issues. Another question that came up was on sand on our beaches because of our referendum issue. And we have a letter that will also be accompanied in the report from our city attorney's office that says that that would not apply under the operation of the Corps of Engineers and the county funding, because there's always matching dollars in there in order to get this work done. But I think, and I think as Amelia said, this report's really, we couldn't have written it much better ourselves.
No, that's true.
And so we have at least a document. If we can get the county to adopt it, then it's a flag that we can wave going forward.
And on the 20th, the Beach and Shores Commission is approving this. It goes to the county commission, I believe, on the 4th of November for final approval. So.
Mr. I would just agree that certainly that they do recognize the significance of the beaches here in front of Vero Beach. I mean, their, their cost for doing no action on our beaches is 11.7 million. So I think clearly, they recognize that. We brought that economic value up in front. The cost-benefit ratio is the highest of any of the, any projects anywhere in the sector. And I think they got the message.
Did this come from the county?
Came from a consultant.
This came from their consultants.
Okay.
Of the Beach and Shores Commission.
Yes.
But ultimately, the contract was approved by the county commission.
And the consultant was actually vetted by the committee while I was on it, and they were a good choice for what it's worth.
Do you need a motion to approve this, or do you want to just?
No, I.
Discussing.
I can have more too, after I meet with Mr. Falls and Mr. Mora over at the county and after the Beach and Shores. I have the meeting on the 20th, the right before, the day before our next city council meeting. But I, honestly, now granted, this is my first time sitting on this committee, but everything that I've expressed during my time there has been addressed in this plan. I'm very pleased with the way that this plan has turned out in regards to Sector 5 specifically.
Monty, did you have anything you want to say? He was on the edge of his seat.
Just, Monty Falls, just briefly, and it was riveting reading with the, with the beach preservation plan, but you're correct, they did select as the recommended alternative in Sector 5, and they called it beach fill. We're trying to get them to change the wording of that to call it dune nourishment, to be more consistent with the work we've done in the past. And they've recommended a replacement interval of four, every four years, and it would be an annual cost, I think it worked out as $600,000 a year, for the whole portion of Sector 5 in the city that is eroding. And that's from pretty much Rio Mar golf course north. Everything south in Sector 5 is the accreting beach. So we were pleased with the plan, just made a few recommendations for some wording changes, and we'll look forward to meeting on Friday.
I wonder what the Ocean Grill thinks about the possibility, if this isn't done, that they're in great peril.
Well, they're, they're one of the few properties that are not armored in that section of beach. Most every other property has a seawall, which makes them even more vulnerable.
Okay, I think it's been, I feel better. It's a useful discussion. I'm glad you're doing better than I do on the committee. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I have further matters, but do others have further matters for Jim? Jim, I just have a couple questions for you, and you answered them to me, but the RFP on the rate structure, you dealt with that last October 2nd. Where is that?
Yes, we have two items. One is the rate study. They had a meeting and narrowed down the folks who'd made proposals to the city for They had a meeting and narrowed down the folks who'd made proposals to the city for the rate study, and that was on the October, it will be on October the 15th, in which they will do the interviews, and they narrowed it down to three firms. Those three firms will be interviewed by the committee that the council has appointed for review of the proposals. So that will be on the rate study. The optimization study is on the streets now, and the proposals are due back October the 21st. And then we will set up a same type of committee for review. We have the chairman of the Utilities Commission, it's part of the rate study review of the consultants, and whoever the Utility Commission wants to appoint to that, we would do that, as well as the optimization study.
Any word back from the county utilizing the fertilizer, trying to use that person to help us enforce our code?
No, sir. My last piece of correspondence was please send us a proposal with the cost, and, and as I mentioned, and I think I copied each of you on that, I said the days of the week are irrelevant to us, the, it could be a minimum number of days a month, but just a proposal, we have not received any response.
How about the golf course?
Dodger town?
Yes, we are working on that. We have gotten to a, what I think is a reasonable proposal, which we will be recommending dedication of some right-of-way to Aviation Boulevard for the future improvements to Aviation Boulevard, as well as on 43rd, the intersection coming off of 60. And that was the proposal that was given to us by the Public Works Director for the, for Indian River County, and we are in the process of putting that agreement together now. And then they have said that they would waive the restrictions based on that.
Okay, and you've taken care of this filming with, I was trying to think of the name of it, Bright something.
The BBC's.
Yeah, and, and by the way, they are 25% owned by BBC Worldwide, so they're, they're fine.
I, I think City Attorney wanted to talk about the pre-.
Yeah.
Okay. I was just going to mention that agreement, I believe Monty has already provided to the county to look at. It's just a preliminary agreement to say what each party is going to do to get everything accomplished.
Now, we do realize that this is supposed to be making a mockery of the two people involved, correct? Bringing a high society British person in aristocracy down to do day-to-day jobs of a nine-to-five, I just don't want it trivializing.
You're talking about the...
Oh, my turn.
Like, the lifeguard thing, right?
Is that, is that not the filming we're talking about?
No, no, we're talking, we, we were back.
We backed up one.
I wondered who you were trivializing.
Because I'm like, no, I'm not sure if I want our lifeguards, you know?
The, the release of the restrictions on the golf course property, that they have, as far as I know, Monty has already provided that to them, and it's the agreement on what each side would be doing to get it all accomplished.
And Peggy's been also communicating with the county attorney's office at the same time.
Okay, one of the last things. On to you, the, we got a award from the Government Finance Officers Association. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental county and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government as management, and it's been awarded to, or shipped to Cynthia D. Lawson, so I think that's a great thing.
Yes, Cindy, obviously, as everyone is aware, she and her department really do an outstanding job for the city, but it, it also takes in the other department directors because in our utilities, reporting of that, the, keeping the accounting part of that, the budgeting part of that, also plays into that same role. So it's, I, I think it really is a team effort in that area, Cindy obviously is the leader.
Further questions for Jim or comments? We'll move on to you, Wayne.
Okay, first thing is, there's a couple of cases that involve not just the city as a client, which of course is the municipal corporation, but also a couple of police officer, I think there's two officers or in one case, and then the chief of police and another officer in the other case. And basically, the attorney, David Lane, who happens to be a former police officer, he has requested, because we've asked him to represent the city and the officers in the cases, that the, obviously, the council's the representative of the corporation, so we, we'd need the approval of the council to go ahead and allow him to represent all parties. And just as an aside, both of these cases, right now, the status is they've basically been dismissed because of improper pleading practices that they followed. So they may or may not even follow again, but we thought we'd go ahead and follow up and have the council approve that arrangement.
So you need a voice vote?
Voice vote is fine, just authorize the mayor to sign the...
Yeah, a little discussion.
Discussion.
Yes, and review, reviewing the backup information, there's nothing that tells us what the issues are, and surely we can't vote on combining the defense if we don't know what the issues are involved with these two cases.
Well, that's why in my memo, all they are is the officer's accessed driver's license information, which under the Driver's, Driver's Privacy Protection Act, which is a federal law, they can make a claim that they improperly accessed their, their records, not for police purposes.
And that was for both, both...
In both cases.
Separate cases?
Both.
Because I wasn't sure.
Both cases, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just, just as a side note as well, there were multiple agencies involved in the same claims, and it happened to be an officer from another agency that made the, the claim. And just another, again, aside note, typically speaking, if one of these issues comes up and I have the authority to make that decision, we cover all parties as long as they're acting as a party of the city, carrying out their responsibilities and duties as an employee of the city. This just so happens that the attorney wanted you to approve this. Now that we're going to have possible insurance coverage, they may not, it may not come to your level of discussion, but just to let you know that I, I feel a responsibility, if we discharge any city employee to function as a city employee, and the allegations against us and the employee, until that dividing line now, as Wayne will tell you, and the police officers, it may come to a point, it's either us or them, and they may choose, well, I better get my own attorney type of thing, and so.
Just as a question, how much money are we talking about?
Well, the federal law says that you can have a, a minimum penalty of $2,500, I believe it is, per each time you access the record. Here, we're only talking about, like, maybe less than a handful of times records were accessed. We're like the small fish in this pond. There's other agencies where, where these officers that are complaining actually worked, where there was literally dozens and dozens and dozens of accesses that they're being sued about.
I just don't like approving a blank check. I mean, if you just give me a high ceiling amount...
No, this has nothing to do with the, the payment of the attorneys. This has to do whether or not you want to allow this attorney to represent the city and the officers in the same cases.
Okay, but we will be expending money for that attorney.
Well, we already have, but this is under...
You would be anyway.
Yeah, and this is under Jim's authority, and I can't imagine something like this ever going beyond Jim's authority. This is something, if they refile, we would probably try to settle it at a nominal amount anyway, so.
The, the cost, you're not really expanding the cost here, it's, it's going to be the same to defend the city as...
Right, it's, it's an economy of scale, they're, it's gonna, they're gonna do the same work for the city and the officers at the same time, basically.
Further comment?
I've authorized.
I'll second. Do you need a voice vote on this, or all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five, nothing?
Okay, the other item, I believe, Councilmember Graves had brought this up, and what this was, I think your backup will show, there was a, a resolution done by the county commission. This had to do with the, there's a contract between All Board Florida and the Orange, Orlando, Orange County Expressway Authority, and they've got some kind of strange things in there, and the county, well, Thad Altman had requested the Attorney General to give an opinion about a taxation issue. Now, whether or not that's the main issue, I, I'm not going to argue that. I've talked with the county attorney on this a bit, and that's why in their resolution, they just didn't, they included facts of, you know, here you've got an out-of-area organization that's basically trying to make decisions for this area about stops, and affecting their contract with All Board Florida, and if their revenue is affected. So it's the council's pleasure, if you want to do a similar resolution and send it to the appropriate parties, it's entirely up to you, we can, we can bring you back that resolution.
I would like to move forward with the resolution. I think, you know, attacking All Board on all fronts that we can, you know, and this is obviously just another area, so.
I, I agree with that, I would second a motion.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, sounds like we'll bring back a resolution similar.
Is it okay with you, Mr. Kramer? Because I think what Ms. Turner says is correct, we have to attack All Board Florida, any place that they hurt us, or might make a difference.
And, and also, I want to definitely support representatives of our area who are actually doing something about this. I think there's plenty of representatives who have stayed noticeably quiet on making any progress on this for us, so let's support the ones that are doing anything.
Well, Mr. Altman has been very vocal on this.
And that's, that's why I want to support him, but I'd like to know what Mr. Posey and Ms. Mayfield are doing.
Mr. Posey is the one who put forth the request to the General Accounting Office to review these federal loans, Ms. Graves.
I know, I just, there's been, there's been some action by other members, though, that has been stronger and not so late in the game, that's all, so.
If you can get Ms. Bondi on this, I'm, rest assured, they, All Board Florida would not appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right.
That's all I have, unless someone has a question about, on anything.
That brings us to City Council, matters old business A1, which is, oh, no, we've taken care of A1, it takes us to B2.
Taken care of that.
Taken care of that, too.
Okay, it takes us to B3 then, correct?
Yes.
Did I get the right one? You're up, Mr..
Okay, conversion of the septic and sewer systems. And what here, I wanted to see if we could ask staff to gather from other communities that have been successful in converting their septic systems to sewer, you know, and the data, like the number of homes, the total cost, homeowners, cost to the ratepayers, how they financed it. You know, even if we look at going to a hybrid step system, that's $8,000 per homeowner to convert. You know, we all want to move forward to protect the lagoon, but I still want to do it in, you know, in the most cost-effective way for our ratepayers, and like to explore other options, you know. Did they implement it with an ordinance or with a referendum? How did they, was there a forcing of these people to convert from their existing septic tank? I think we, we just need a lot more information on how to move, so we can decide on the best way for us to move forward with this.
Mr. Bolton's here and can tell you, we've been monitoring Stewart, who has the, probably the largest impact on the lagoon because of their septic systems. Now, their system's a little different than ours, they're going to a grinder system, and they're actually putting city employees on private property, but their financing and the system itself is similar to what we're doing. And so we've sort of been modeling ours and looking at their incentive program, for example, waiving of impact fees and some of these other things to get our costs down as much as we can. And so we've been following a lot of their guidelines, and that, that's sort of the model, and they're probably the leader as it stands right now, because when they first started implementing, they have far exceeded the number of customers hooking on, I believe, Rob will tell you that, than they expected at that point, and they were able to get it down. We're looking at a lot of those elements, for example, the financing of the project, we're down to about $6,300. Some of the issues, though, that you won't get around, as an example, when the homeowner inspects their septic tank, if there is a problem, now, for us, it's a good thing because it cleans up a possible lagoon issue, but to the homeowner, it's going to cost them money, we're not into the repair of the septic tank business. But Rob, maybe you can give some information on Stewart?
Yeah, City of Stewart, Rob Bolton, Water and Sewer Director, City of Stewart has probably been the most proactive city along the lagoon with the septic tank conversion. They are, they have roughly 2,000 homes, we have 1,500. So they started a program about two years ago. Their program, they're running lines out into the streets, just like they're using a grinder system, but it's the same thing, two-inch lines with one-inch or two-inch lines to the property, property lines. But they have run lines now to 780 homes, they're on their next basin, they're calling it basins also, that they're working on, and of the 780 homes, they have 491 people that have signed up, which is pretty good. They are doing the installation on private property, so it's their crew, so they have a waiting list, they have roughly 380 homes, or 385 homes that they've installed the units on, so they still have 100 more to even catch up on the backlog, so they're four or five months behind, I, I believe, on just what they're doing on install.
Rob, just a comment on that, something about when you start working on somebody's property, then you become the owner of that, and five years down the road, or 10 years down the road, it's going to be your fault because something happens, and so we, we're trying to stay away from that.
Yeah, the only difference, the, the key differences in our program and their program is they're looking at grinder systems, we're looking at the hybrid step system. The second is, they went ahead and hired contractors to do the work in the right-of-way, and then they're doing the work using city staff on private property. We're looking at doing the work in the right-of-way, where we're comfortable with doing stuff, and then looking at contractors to do the work on private property. So i- in the case of if your septic tank went bad, this is not a mandatory program until the septic tank goes bad. So those people that might be home thinking, oh, well, if the city pushes this forward, all of a sudden I'm going to have to connect, no, the, the connection will occur when you have a septic tank problem, and you go to get a permit from the health department, the health department's at that point is going to say, nope, you're in this step system area, you have to go to the city and connect to their system at that time. So that was one of the reasons why, and I've been fighting to keep the numbers down, is I want our step system to be comparable to what a septic tank replacement would be, that the, that the homeowner would have to be paying anyhow. But, but that would generate the, the initial connection. Now, what they, what Stewart did is they went on the proactive side, and so they said, well, to try to get people off the septic system, what can we do? So they went in and offered a $2,000 rebate, or if you sign up within the first year, 12 months, you get $2,000 off. Then they went a step further, and they said, if you pay cash, you get another $1,000 off. If you don't pay cash, then we'll finance it for you over a 10-year period at no interest. So that's similar to what we're looking at doing, we're looking at, our impact fee is $2,290, so we're going to look at $2,290 if you sign up within the first 12 months, that's what we're proposing. And then what I looked at was the cost of the lines in the street were, and the, the line to the property line was going to run each property owner roughly $1,100. So what we're looking at is if they sign up within the first year and they pay cash, then the impact fee is waived, and the cost of all that construction that took place in the city right-of-way is waived. All they're responsible is for the, the cost of installation on their property itself. So I'm trying to keep it simple, but trying to give the best rebate. So, so we're, we're down to about $6,300 is roughly where we're, we're at now. We'll get some harder numbers and some more, I guess, meat and potatoes for the 21st, we're kind, we're wanting to come back to you on the 21st with the ordinance and the resolution, we've been working on it all along. It just so happens that we take things to the Utility Commission first, and they canceled their meeting, or they postponed their meeting till the 21st. So we would have had everything available for their meeting, which would have been this week.
This week, yeah.
And, and instead, now they're, they've moved to the 21st. So we're planning on meeting with them in the morning, and then meeting with council in that evening, and taking whatever comments or recommendations that they have, hopefully at least get the council to set dates and stuff for public hearings, and any changes that the council agrees on, that the commission recommends, will roll into the, the second meeting.
And from what I've seen of paperwork, it looks like we're getting all the permitting...
We are permitted for the Bethel Creek area, we've started already the engineering for the next phase basin to the south of that. I already have a six-unit multifamily complex that should have never been permitted with a septic system that was, it's been around for a while, that's failing, and so the health department and I have been working, and we're trying to get them connected up as soon as possible. And then there's another home at the end of Behamar, that's right on the lagoon, that they don't, they're out of town now, but they want, they're looking at getting connected because they would have to...
Replace the health system.
Yeah, they're like within 20 feet of the seawalls, that kind of stuff, so. Any questions?
Also, we gave you all some documents today, which sort of gives you...
Yeah, I saw that.
Thank you. Bedtime reading.
I tried to save trees by sending it all electronically, and here we...
Yeah, after the lagoon, we'll have to tackle rainforests.
Well, Rob, I really.
Driftwood, we'll get some driftwood out, bring it in.
Appreciate all you, all you've done on this, it's absolutely amazing. And, you know, for us council members, we like these little brochures like this because then we can simply understand it. But if, if you could just give a, like, financial term sheet on what, you know, because, because the questions that I get a lot, I mean, people like to help the lagoon, but then they say, okay, Jay, what's it going to cost? And, you know, if we just give us a simple term sheet that we can give to people and they say, oh, okay, that's what it is, I just appreciate it.
Okay, we'll work on that.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, I believe that brings us to city council member.